Prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we appreciate the opportunity to be here today. Thank you for such a pretty day, being with our citizens. And we're still battling with waters and cleanup from the floods. And as we brace for a second round of that, give everybody strength and patience. Thank you for all those who work for the city and go out to protect our citizens every day. Pray for our country and our world and help us to make good decisions today. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Mr. Bradford.
Present.
Mr. Everson.
Here.
Mr. Jenkins.
Present.
Mr. Corbin.
Present.
Mr. Flurry.
Present.
Ms. Lynch.
Ms. Bowman.
Here. All right, tomorrow, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the administrative conference meeting from Monday, June 8th, and the city council meeting from Tuesday, June 9th, 2015. Now, we are at awards recognition of distinguished guests and communications. Do any council members have any awards recognitions or distinguished guests that they'd like to recognize? Seeing none. Mayor Tyler, do y'all have any awards recognitions or communications at this time?
Not today, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we are at reports. We have property standards is available here if anybody has a particular issue that needs to be addressed. And let's see, earlier this month, I think we already received the revenue collection plan and the charity bond forfeiture's report. We received all of that already, didn't we? Somebody correct me if I'm wrong. I believe we did. And will we have a master plan committee report tomorrow? Great, so we will. I see Mr. Sweets in the audience and he nodded, confirming we'll have an update from them tomorrow. There's no public hearing tomorrow, so we'll go straight to adding legislation to the agenda. Minister Crawford, is there any legislation to be added?
I believe we have two pieces of legislation to be added. Mr. Thompson?
That's correct. They are on the agenda. What is the resolution? Resolution authorize the mayor to execute an amendment with management, an amendment to the management agreement between the City of Shreveport and Metro Management Associates, Inc. I believe that there's going to be a retirement and new owner substituting those names. And the other is an ordinance authorize the incurring of debt and issuance of not exceeding $35 million of taxable revenue refunding bonds. This is for the water and sewer. Catboy.
All right, thank you very much. Let's see, I don't have any requests to speak on any agenda items at this time. I do have a request to speak from a citizen. It looks like maybe this was a discussion that held over from the Public Safety Committee. Can we, do we have public comments at today's meeting at the end? Or is that only on Tuesdays?
Under the words, it's only on Tuesdays.
That's what I thought. Does anybody want, I mean, should we hear this at this time? Or wait until the end?
Yeah, present.
I don't know, I just have a speaker form that's up here.
Mr. Beaman here? I don't think he's here. I think he handled it all in committee.
He took care of it, I think.
Okay. So maybe they just submitted an additional form. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on. We have no confirmations or appointments to be considered tomorrow, though we have received some. And so if there are people here that need to be introduced, we can take that up. But I don't believe we have any that are going to be voted on tomorrow. Did you want to at this time, Al?
Yes, sir, we can. I believe they're probably at the end of the agenda. Am I correct?
Are they? At the end, okay, we'll wait till then if that's, I think we'll move.
They're here, wait.
Now, I'd appreciate, Mr. Chairman, because I'd like for you not to have to sit through the whole meeting.
Let's see.
Okay, I don't know if you want to read those off, or do you want me to read those off, Mr. Thompson?
Whatever the mayor would like.
I'm sorry?
Whatever the mayor would like.
Okay, if you don't mind reading those off, Council.
Mr. Charles Himes, I believe, Division Manager of Maintenance, this is in SPAR.
Why don't you stand, Mr. Himes?
Did you want to come up and just introduce yourself and say hello?
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor, CAO. I'm just first say, my name is Charles Himes. I'm a 17-year employee of City of Shreveport after being at SPAR all 17 years. And just want to say I'm excited to have the opportunity to lead in this capacity. And I look forward to working with everyone and getting some things done around in the city. And just want to say I look forward to working with each and every one. I just want to thank Shelley and our staff. We have a great team. And I'm very confident that we can all work together and continue what we have going here at SPAR and do great things for the city.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any particular questions?
What positions you hold at SPAR?
Assistant Division Manager.
Assistant Division Manager?
Yes, sir.
Okay. 17 years?
Well, not the whole 17 years, but I started as a crew member.
Okay.
But, you know, progression, yeah. For the last two years, I've been assistant.
Two years?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Himes.
Mrs. Katie Martin?
I'm going to say just about Charles, he gets tired of me saying this, Mayor, but I always like to say it. I think he answered your question, not all 17 years, but Charles did begin as a crew member, has climbed that ladder, the retaining wall, whichever you'd like to refer to it. He's not only been experience-wise, but Charles has also gone back to school during that time and received his bachelor's degree. So we're very proud of what he's been able to accomplish in his 17 years with this at SPAR. And as we began to plan our succession planning in SPAR, knowing that the Division Manager was going to retire, he retired after 41 years. You all recognized him earlier this year. We put Charles in that assistant to the Division Manager job to begin that succession planning.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yes, you're welcome. And you said Katie Martin. Katie is not currently an employee at City, so I wanted to preface it by saying this is her first time in front of this body. So Katie, you want to come and tell us about yourself. Katie will be taking the landscape architect position, which is an assistant to a Division Manager in planning and development. And planning development, our Division Manager's building architect. And Katie will come to us as working to complete her landscape architect's license, but she has 10 years' experience in landscape architecture, so we're really glad to have her.
Hello, my name's Katie Martin, and I currently am employed by Nicholas and Associates, a small landscape architecture firm here in Shreveport. I've worked on projects with the city. We were part of the design team for Shreveport Common Vision Plan. We also worked on the C.C. Antoine Park renovation plan. And also worked from concept to construction documents on the Caddo Common Urban Park. And I'm very excited about the opportunity to join SPAR and to serve the City of Shreveport with their team. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? I'll say I've had the privilege of working with you on several of those projects and look forward to having you join the team.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Next appointment is Mrs. Elizabeth McCain.
Hi, I'm Liz McCain, and I've had the pleasure of meeting both the mayor and Mr. Crawford on the Director of Economic Development position. I, my background is I have about 25 years' experience in economic development. I'm well-respected here in the local community, outside, within the state as well, and outside of the state also. I have quite a fantastic network of people that I've worked with through the years, either businesses, other state agencies, or organizations.
Thank you so much. Do anybody have any questions?
I'd like to ask, on the email that I got, there was nothing, the attachments were blank. Are you aware of that, Mr. Chairman?
Now, I was able to open my attachment, but I did hear from at least one or two council members that they weren't able to open the attachment for Ms. McCain's appointment. So maybe if we could resend that.
Try to, I had four blank ones, and then I had her re, if you scroll, you may now, mine may have been unique, but I had four blank sheets, and then I scrolled down to the bottom of the document, and her resume was on there.
Thank you, Councilman James.
Just try it, I don't know if that, I mean.
Right now, thank you.
But if we can resend that too, that'd save a trip. But yeah, that was, our email's been a little quirky lately in a couple of instances.
Jim.
Yes.
Let me preference, and I want to ask you a few questions if you don't mind, but I want to preference, preface my first comment to the mayor. Mayor, you're the mayor in, in, I have, I view, I view you having the privilege to bring your own people on, because again, you be responsible for those people. But at the same time, you try to give this body the privilege or the right to scrutinize the person as well as to confirm them for certain positions.
Absolutely.
I saw Mrs. McCain's resume, and I felt compelled to ask a few questions, but, but again, it's a balance that sometimes, you know, that we have to make.
Yes, sir.
And I don't, you know, necessarily, I haven't reached a decision whether I should support it or not support it, but I just, again, I just like, as a manager, I have a problem with people telling me who to hire when I'm responsible to. But at the same time, I do have superiors who have veto power over the people that I want to hire. So I just wanted you to know that. I was, it's nothing personal, it's just a business situation that I want to review something with Mrs. McCain.
Absolutely, absolutely. I have no problem with that.
My first question, Ms. McCain, is why did you leave your last employment?
Well, I had been at the Chamber of Commerce for 22 years in the economic development field. And then the Economic Development Department there separated from the Chamber of Commerce and became NLEP. So at the time they did that, we just packed up our bags and moved to another location into a different office. And so I had worked under Kurt Foreman, which was the previous administrator, and then Scott Martinez was the new administrator that came in, and he was beginning to reorganize the entire department, or the entire agency, for that matter.
Are you, and this is a position that the mayor had been anticipating feeling for a long time. She even wanted, you know, I mean, early, very where I think it was. But give me your credentials as to your certification, your education.
I have, I completed the university, the, at Norman, Oklahoma, there was Economic Development Institute. That's a three-year program. So I completed that. Through the years, I've taken various ED courses. I've taken week-long courses on business retention and expansion. I've taken marketing classes. So most years, in the last five or six years, I guess, we were allowed to have professional development courses. That wasn't always the case when I was at the Chamber of Commerce, it was offended on the funding. But I started last year on a certification, on an economic development certification program. I was awarded a scholarship to attend that program. And I've been awarded another scholarship again to go back and attend more classes this year. So I'm in the process of that.
Of getting your certification.
Certification.
Your certification.
Mm-hmm.
You mentioned on your resume, Ms. McCain, several large companies that you said you took a role in recruiting them here. You have Pratt, Runpac, Bentley, Libby, Whole Foods. Exactly what role you played in these, in recruiting these companies?
Well, in a lot of these, initially, the initial contact may have come to me or the initial request for information. So at that time, there would be a request for information. You would have to put together site information, building information, incentive information, there would be utility information. There would be a lot of information that was required, that be submitted, so along with your sites and/or available properties. So you would submit those back either at the state level, or if the lead came directly to you, you would be dealing with a site location consultant. And most of the time, you did not know who the company or what the company was that was being represented. So after that is submitted, if you're lucky enough to be selected, then you're nominated, then you're contacted again. And at that point in time, you set up a site visit where they come in, they look at the sites, they look at the properties, they may want to meet with different firms around town. They always had an interest in the utility companies, the natural gas companies. Utilities was always a key part of it, as was water and sewer. So whatever they requested on that initial visit when they came in, you tried to have everything answered for them at that point in time. That would be kind of the process. You would lay out an agenda, you would have a schedule of all the meetings and appointments that they wanted to set up. It may be area bankers, it may be a variety of things, but whatever they requested, it was my responsibility to line that up for them. So, and then at that time, if they came back again, there would always be discussions about incentives, and of course, the state would be engaged as well, local would be engaged. So just whatever it was that was required to make that project locate in Shreveport is what we would do.
Let me ask you, in your, in your career, in your tenure as in a position with your last employer, do you have any, any testimonies regarding your, your working with diverse groups specifically in recruiting and helping enhance those groups?
I have, I gave the mayor quite a few letters of recommendation and from support. They would be from Louisiana Economic Development, Caddo Parish Commission. There would be various businesses that I had worked with, like your Schlumberges, it would be engineering firms. It was a variety of letters of recommendation that I had to kind of show the kind of support and, and the whole area that I had worked with, including the utility companies as well.
Okay, so the diversity of your experience is good, but I'm now asking you, as relates to minority in firms, vendors, my, my view is our greatest opportunity at Shreveport is to, is to recruit and retain minority businesses. And I want to, what's your experience in dealing with?
Well, and there were times that I would have a minority business, I would be working with a minority or woman-owned business, which any opportunity is an opportunity, opportunity for me. So there would be times when I would talk to Karen Barnes here at the city, she does that, she works with the DBA firms. I would recommend that that might be a program that they might want to engage in as well. There were other programs here, such as the Chamber of Commerce has a program that's the government procurement that helps local businesses or businesses acquire or secure government contracts. So there were times that I would refer them to that organization as well. There's score counselors here, the Service Corps of Retired Executives, that work with businesses that are trying to start up, the small businesses trying to start up and get themselves going. So I've worked with, I worked with the CDC, so I've worked with quite a few of the different agencies and organizations here.
I appreciate your remarks, and I just want to reiterate that from where I am, the greatest opportunities, I mean, opportunities for economic development in Shreveport is, I think, is there. I think we just have not went into that venue to get, to get Shreveport marketed as, as a nice, great place to come and do business. But I'm still saying that I'm going to be watching very carefully about how you present your position as our new economic development person in, in getting minority businesses here, as well as to create opportunities within the structure of, of Shreveport where minority business can grow and prosper also.
Well, Mr. Bradford, anybody that grows jobs here, I'm excited about that opportunity. I don't care what color, race, religion, anything like that, I am more than willing to work with any of them, and have.
Mayor, you have specific goals and objectives that you given her to work on?
I have, and of course, the job description I did, I think maybe provide to you all. If I did not, I'm thinking that I have a job description, I can send that to you. And of course, I've had several meetings with her before we decided to appoint her. And of course, she knows that we are going to be working diligently for economic opportunities for everybody. And one of the things that she and I talked about in our last conversation is that we want to make sure that we help grow our small businesses, retain them, offer that kind of support, training, education, whatever they need. So she knows what the expectations are. I have dealt with her on those and provided her with a job description, but I've also given her some additional dialogue about what my expectations are. We've also asked her to develop metrics to show what those results are going to be, and that will be part of our strategic plan. And she's done that. And so, you know, as the mayor of this city, and I don't think she's worked for the city before from the credentials I've seen, but now she's going to be working for this city, in Shreveport, under this mayoral person. And we are going to be pushing for economic opportunities for everybody that lives in Shreveport. And we'll try to attract people to come here to do business.
Yes, ma'am.
Absolutely.
I just, I just wanted you, you understand where I'm at?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, yes, sir.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm fading, I don't know if I have to say anything. Thank you so much, Liz, we appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
And let's see, so at this point, we are at consent agenda. We have no items for introduction, but we do have some items to be adopted. Mr. Crawford, did you want to proceed with this?
Scrolling up as you speak, Mr. Chairman. To adopt ordinances and resolution, resolution 114, declaring certain adjudicated properties to be surplus, which will authorize the mayor to sell the City of Shreveport tax interest in these adjudicated properties. Resolution 115, granting consent to the assignment of a cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of Shreveport and hope for the Homeless Incorporated to Christian Services Program Institute. Resolution 116, declaring the official intent of the City of Shreveport to reimburse certain capital expenditures for water and sewage vehicles and equipment, and SPAR equipment from proceeds of lease purchase agreement. Resolution 117, authorizes the mayor to dedicate the 3,600 block of Milton Street in honor of an extraordinary life of the late Joyce Marie McLemore Bowman. McLemore, excuse me, Bowman.
Is that right?
That's it, McLemore. My apologies. Resolution 118, to amend and reenact resolution 18 of 2009, a resolution to establish a task force on small and emerging businesses in the City of Shreveport. Resolution 119, to recognize the accomplishments of Dr. Ray Belton as chancellor of Southern University at Shreveport, to congratulate him for being selected as president-chancellor of the Southern University A&amp;M System.
All right, thank you. And certainly excited to see the resolution acknowledging Dr. Belton's appointment there. That's a wonderful step for him, and we know that he'll remember Shreveport fondly in his decision-making. So we are excited about that. Also, wanted to just mention briefly, I had a note that 115 needs to be postponed. Evidently, there is an attempt between the two parties involved in that to resolve some other issues that aren't city-related, they're between the parties, and so we need to push that back immediately.
That's correct.
Mr. Thompson, did you have?
Councilwoman Lynch, who's the author of 119, will not be here tomorrow, but she asked us to try to see whether or not we could get Dr. Belton here. He said that he will be present, but she asked, if possible, for you to bring him up first or near the beginning of the meeting so that he could get back to his other activities.
Be happy to. I think that'd be a great way to start the meeting, so.
I spoke with her prior to the meeting today.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment. In regards to, and I, I don't know this, or should know this, in regards to adjudicated property and the disposal of adjudicated property, do we, do we, when we get, especially adjudicated property, do we do the mineral rights, do the mineral rights go with the property, or do we maintain mineral rights?
I believe we always maintain them. We'll find out.
Who's in charge of that? Robert?
It's actually a little bit even more complicated. Technically, when a property is sold, if the revenues from that property are enough to, well, if, if mineral rights are leased, then those revenues actually have to go to pay back the tax due on the property. Am I saying that correctly?
Yes, I think we have some litigation going on.
We do.
Subject matter.
Yeah.
But I think normally, we attempt to reserve, we do reserve the mineral rights in the deed, if I'm not mistaken, unless you remember otherwise.
Normally, they do reserve some mineral rights, but as you say, we have some litigation going on encompassing those issues right now, as far as paying back the taxes out of any money that we've received from the mineral rights.
Right, whether or not there's an interest in those rights for the purposes of that repayment that Mr. Wilson made. So that's currently in litigation. There's not an opinion on that right now, but as soon as we, I guess, as soon as it was resolved, we'll have an answer for you on that question.
Okay, what about previous years? I mean, I mean, maybe, are you familiar with the tradition of what, how that's done?
I would need to do some research on that, Councilman Bradford, but I know what's in litigation now is the answer to that, the ultimate answer to that question.
I'm saying, you know, in the past, I know we dispose of quite a, quite a lot of city, city property, and I know from way back, I mean, thinking way back, that we kind of sold some property, leased some property that somebody made a lot of money on, and we got a little money on.
Yeah, but now that wasn't adjudicated property, just so we're.
That was just property. That was ride-away property.
Ride-away property.
And it wasn't adjudicated. There's a big difference.
But the premise, my premise is that as we dispose of adjudicated property, do we maintain the right, if all of a sudden they find some gold up under there?
Contractually, it looks like yes. Legally, we're not sure yet.
Okay. And as that develops, I will make sure to keep the council apprised as to what the court opinion is.
Okay.
Thank y'all.
Mr. Chairman, just as a clarification on the list of properties associated with this piece of legislation, the one that is listed in Council District D, I believe, is not in Council District D. It would probably be either in E or F.
Okay.
Okay, so it's not in your district?
And just as a note for the technology folks, I can't open any attachments today, and this happens.
They're working on mine, right?
Fairly regularly. So I'm not sure why, but, but my attachments won't open. Let's see, are there, oh, the only other question I had, and I read the resolution 118, Councilman Bradford? I had read the resolution 118, but I didn't know what the difference was from the previous resolution.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, yes. As you know, this, this resolution was enacted in 2009, and it had some, the makeup of the members of the committee, the task force, you know, three, three city councils, then it lasted some additional entities that would be a part of the committee. Some of those entities are not in existence anymore. So all this resolution is does, is to.
Modernize it.
Modernize it.
Perfect. I just, I just wasn't sure what the, yeah, what the change was.
Yeah, it is, yeah, only those that are not, no longer in existence, we're going to, you know, sort of modernize it to make, to make, to give us the proper number that's included in the original with, so that we can meet with the, with the right amount of members present.
Great.
Chairman?
Yes.
I think it makes more changes than that. What it actually does is to say that the only voting members are the city council members, and the other members are ex officio, non-voting members. And one of the problems that we had before was getting a quorum, when you had all of the entities as voting members.
Okay.
I forgot to mention that for you.
So it's reducing the voting members, reduces the voting members to the city council, and then, and then attempt to make sure that quorum is obtainable for me.
Right, and the other members are non-voting, ex officio.
Okay.
That's, that's true.
I'm looking through the list of, the list of proposed members, and what is the NWLED Foundation?
I'm on that.
Northwest, Louis.
Should that be NLEP, or is that?
I think that's NLEP.
Northwest, Louisiana.
We'll look at that and change that.
Okay. Any other questions on anything on consent? Seeing none, we will move on to resolutions on second reading and final passage.
Resolutions on second reading and final passage. Resolution 92 accepts dedication of Riverview Lane and River Run Circle in Riverside Village Base.
Also being told we're going to postpone this one one more time.
Understand. Yes, sir. Resolution 103 authorizes the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development. Resolution 106 authorizes and provides for the waiver of permits, inspections, and other related fees for the construction of a house at 1110 Cypress Creek Circle in Norris Ferry Crossing subdivision. Resolution 107 acknowledging that the city council has reviewed the 2015 internal municipal water pollution prevention report concerning North Regional and Lucas wastewater plants. Resolution 106 authorizes the waiver of buildings. 108 authorizes the waiver of building permit fees and authorization, the donation of building materials and supplies for five to 10 qualified low-income homeowners in the City of Shreveport. Resolution 109 is a resolution authorizing the City of Shreveport, State of Louisiana, the city to hire professionals in conjunction with the issuance of not to exceed $35 million taxable revenue refund bond, Shreveport Airport Systems in one or more series of the city for the purpose of refunding prior bonds of the city.
Okay. And just so that we all are able to vote in clear conscience and without digging through our past emails, can we resend the wastewater municipal water pollution prevention report?
Certainly.
Just to make sure it's current in everybody's minds.
It only really needs to go to Jeff, frankly, but this.
Happy to, I'm happy to read it again. Again, of course.
We'll send it, we'll send it to everybody again.
That's right.
Okay. Oliver. I have, I'm not going to get into the nitty-gritty of this Resolution 109 and what's transpired, but I would like somebody to send me kind of the pro formas on where the savings of the money on those bonds are, okay?
Certainly.
I know there's some discussion that there was going to be sent out, and I did speak to the gentleman at Wells Fargo, but whenever that's ready, I'd like to take a look at it for no other reason than idle curiosity after.
Absolutely. We'd be glad to provide that for you. Okay?
Thank you.
All right.
See, are there any other, I see no more questions, but there are a couple of things that might be worth a question. Anybody got anything else? 108 is world changers. It's a community development program.
Friendship House is 106.
Friendship House is 106. And what's the DOTD one? What is that one again?
Dead End 49.
Yeah, cul-de-sacs and stuff that are cut off. Great. Anybody else? If there's nothing, let's go on to introduction of resolutions.
Introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to July 14, 2015. Resolution 1020 authorizes the acceptance of a donation of advertising space from Lamar Advertising. Resolution 121 authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement with Grambling State University relative to the Red River Classic Football Game.
Let's, are there, I see no questions on those. If there are none, we will move on to introduction of ordinance.
Introduction of ordinance is not to be adopted prior to July 14, 2015. Ordinance 52 amends ordinance four of 2013 and ordinance number 113 of 2014, the capital improvements budget. Ordinance 53 is a zoning issue, C-60-15, amending chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, the City of Shreveport zoning ordinance by rezoning property located on the west side of Elizabeth Avenue, 100 feet north of Julia Street, being the same as hereby changed from B1 buffer business district to B2 neighborhood business district.
Okay. Councilman Corbin.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I had a question on ordinance 52. The, certainly I'm glad to see additional street repaving being considered. My question was, where did this list come from? Were these just next streets on the list from our previous overlay, or is any of this based on our, our new program? And I know Robert will have all those answers.
Robert can give you all those answers.
Councilman, this, the list of streets is presented to you is, as we've completed all the minor arterial asphalt surface streets, now we're going, looking at collector streets. And the collector streets that are on the list were selected based on their PCI or the rating index that was given to those streets based on our new transportation program that we're in the process of instituting.
Okay. So we did, did take into account our street management program.
That is correct. Yes, sir.
I mean, I'm a little surprised to see, certainly the PCIs that are the most severe are primarily in districts A and B, and there are not very many.
Collectors.
But for collectors perhaps, make up the difference. Plenty of time to review.
Although it's no longer in the district I represent, I'm glad to see Wallace Lake Road on there. I know Councilman Flory will be glad to see that.
Absolutely.
And my one question on Dixie Garden, I guess that is a portion of Dixie Garden that is the portion that's in the city limits, obviously, because it does say to the city limits.
That is correct, Councilman. The city limits.
There isn't that much of it, truthfully, that's in the city limits. So that's why I was like.
It's a pretty good, it's about a half a mile long. It goes from East Kings Highway to the ditch right behind Lover's Lane.
Behind the school, you mean?
It's the next block over. Yes, sir.
I got you. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
In regards to, Ms. Chairman, I'm sorry. Go ahead. In regards to Russell Road, and the two, the two in District A is certainly, I would consider worse, some, two are the worst, but Russell Road is, is going to be shut down for traffic for, until they finish the I-69 interchange connection. So is there, is there any way this can be repurposed, the allocation for this project?
Certainly, that is entirely possible, Councilman, that we can relook at that from that standpoint. But we, we're trying to attempt with this particular phase of Russell Road is to pick up all the outside area of Russell Road that is beyond the work that's being done by the DOTD, because when they complete their work, they're going to be fixing that portion of the road with if they've got closed.
Okay.
And we wanted to make sure that the rest of it was taken care of. As you know, there's quite a few base failure problems there.
Oh, we got some serious problems. But what's the time, what's the timeframe we're looking at as far as some of this work gets started?
I'm hoping that we can begin starting on the work very shortly. There is a change order that I will need to do in order to obligate the remaining funds that are left over in that program, as we spelled out in the ordinance. But in the meantime, I can get started on the contract with the funds I have available now.
Oh, great. Okay.
Soon as you all can, soon as you all can pass on this.
Yes.
Then we can get started.
Well, I think we're going to pass on this tomorrow.
It's a two-reader, I think.
Yeah. But I, I do want to, ma'am, I want to at least suggest, if indeed, if we get a report back from DOTD about the extent that Russell Road is going to be in, in travelable, that we can look at some options for some immediate stuff, road overlay.
Yes, sir. We'll be more than glad to get with the mayor to discuss other options for other streets if y'all are desirous to delay those improvements.
And later on, I can, with my colleague's hand, to get some more funds for Russell Road.
I just heard that you don't want to have that one done. So that's all for that. I mean, I don't remember any other part of that discussion. I just, that was the gift horse you just kicked right there in the mouth. I mean, that's.
Yeah, yeah.
Robert said we're going to be out of, we're going to be okay because DOTD is going to repair a lot of that, that we already got allocated. But anyway, I just want to give us an option, if that's going to be shut down, at least for, they're telling me another eight to, eight to 10 months.
That's entirely possible. Yes, sir.
If I may, Mr. Chairman and, and Mr. Bradford, if we can kind of talk about that one offline?
Sure.
Because we, what we don't want to do is not have our part done when it's time for DOTD to do theirs.
That's true, too.
So I really would like to talk to you about that offline, if you don't mind.
I just want to see, I wanted to, rather than, you know, some, just some, some.
Right. There are some other, on this list, if you'll look, there are some other streets there in MLK on the list that they will be able to see, and we've already done some things, if you can recall earlier.
Oh, yes, sure, ma'am. You're right.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So let's see, those are.
Thank you, Robert.
Those are for introduction, not to be adopted prior to July 14. And.
Ordinance is on second reading, Mr. Chair.
Second reading and final passage.
Yes, sir. Ordinance 49 amends the 2015 capital improvements budget. Ordinance 50 amends the 2015 general fund budget. Ordinance 51 amends the 2015 budget funding contractual services provided to Sportram by Metro Management Associates Incorporated, appropriating the funds authorized therein.
All right. Any questions on these? Now, with, let's see, what did we have that's being introduced? We have the Metro Management.
Yes.
How did?
Change, yeah.
And those, those are in the right, I mean, there's, there's no need to consider order or.
No.
What needs to happen first or concurrently or anything like that. Making sure. All right. Mr. Thompson, is there going to be any table legislation to be considered?
I'm not aware of any, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, could I ask one question on ordinance number 50?
Yeah.
On the landfill fees, increasing the landfill fees, I believe that this will be a $1.2 million swing, that you were predicting a $500,000 less than budgeted, and now it's $800,000 more.
That's correct. The initial assessment was based on what we had collected last year, and that was the original projection that we would have to reduce it, but we've actually seen an increase in revenues for the, for the first five months of this year. A lot of that, we understand, has to do with another landfill closing in another part of the area where we've seen additional receipts, and we anticipate that continuing through the remainder of this year.
So we think that the old landfill closing will bring us $1.2 million in new revenue, I mean, revenue.
Well, we think it'll, we think it'll hold. Initially, the amount that we had projected to be short was that budgeted over what we had collected in 2014. Generally, we like to stay consistent with our budget projections unless we have some outside reason to believe that they will be higher than the previous year to project at that amount. And so when we analyzed the 2015 budget, we saw that that amount had been projected at, I can't remember exactly what it was, $500,000 over last year's amount, with no real reason to believe it would go there. But when we started receiving revenue receipts this year, we did see the increase. We noted it. We asked for an explanation from solid waste, and we believe that money will continue for the remainder of this year.
Okay. So the projections are based on revenue that we already received?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
That's on actual figures that we've received to date. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bradford, just let me know that Mr. Bowles will not be able to be here tomorrow. And we had one item on adding legislation to the agenda, so he just asked that, and it's just on first reading, if you had any questions to, if you could ask them today.
Yeah, that's the one Oliver had some questions about.
Okay.
Does anybody have any other questions on that? I mean, I think we just were looking for some additional supplementary information.
I think Wells Fargo would be to answer some questions.
That had already been requested. So, I mean, as long as that can be provided.
Yeah, he just mentioned that he would have a, either a spreadsheet or some type of, kind of workup on where the numbers fall and where the work, you know, where the savings is and where the rest is. And y'all may already have it, it's just a matter of sending it to my email, and that's all I, that's all I need.
That's all you need. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We'll get it to you, Councilman.
All right. So let's see. We are now at property standards appeals. Unless there's any other questions? As far as now, if you could come up.
Councilwoman Efferson, we have three cases today. Two of those are old and one is new. The first case is in Councilwoman Jenkins' area. This is at 360 East 6th to 8th St. If you recall, this was a demolition. The owner did tear down the property, the structure that was there. We are still cleaning it up. All the bricks are gone. The deck has been removed, two-thirds of it. He's dismantled it. There are some bricks and some satin bags, but I think he's going to retain those for a little while longer to see what the rain is going to do. And the cinder blocks. He thinks he can have it completed in another 60 days. He is here. Mr. Southern.
I believe I can.
And I have no objection.
For the 60 days?
For another 60 days. Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I mean, I don't need to say this again, but he's done good progress. I'm sorry this last little bit keeps, but the weather certainly hadn't been easy probably to move anything of significance through that property in the last, so certainly make a motion for 60 days.
Second.
Thank you. Our next case.
Let's just wait till we get the vote, one sec. It looks like a motion passes unanimously. Motion was by Councilman Jenkins, seconded by the chair, and it passed unanimously.
Our next case is at 618 Argyle Street is in Councilwoman Lynch's area. Mr. Joseph is present. Mr. Joseph is still rehabbing the structure. He needs to trim out the doors and windows, replace the siding on the east side, install windows on the west side, and put all corner trim up. There's still more to do, but we want this done within the next 30 days. We'll come back and see what progress he's made, and then we continue.
I saw a motion, Mr. Chairman. 30 days.
All right. We have got a motion from Councilman Bradford, seconded by Councilman Bowman. And that motion, that's, it's going to pass unanimously, and it does. Thank you.
Our next case, Councilwoman Efferson, is in your area. I would have Mr. Markelus to come up. This is 437 Boulevard. It's our new case. This home is in a slow decline, and it's demolition by neglect and appearance. It is, as you can see, this is the house, there is just some minor things like the porch, rodent wood that needs to be done. At most, at this point, most of the work is superficial. So at most, it just, it's not too late to save the structure. Mr. Markelus wants to rehab the structure. He's asking for 90 days. I am aware of his work and what he's done with the properties in Highland, so I am in favor of the 90 days if you are.
I most certainly am, too. And I also owe him an apology for not writing him back. He wrote me an email about this property, and for those of you who've not met Mr. Markelus before, he has saved quite a few houses in the Highland area, and he's done wonderful, wonderful work on taking some houses that were in much worse condition than this and putting them into a really nice condition where they're able to be sold to single family and some rented to residents in a very high-quality fashion. So definitely make the motion to postpone 90 days.
Second.
Thank you.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Councilman Jenkins. And motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Dan.
That concludes the cases that I have for today.
All right. So that is all we have for property standards. We are now to alcoholic beverage ordinance appeals. Corvusisco, there you are.
Good afternoon, Councilman.
Good afternoon, how are you?
Sorry for my voice. This was a denial for an ABO card for Johnny Kennedy. I want to tell you, since I've been in this office since January, I've approved 2,306 ABO cards, and I only denied 12, 93 SOBs, and haven't denied any. On this case here, the reason that we decided to deny that ABO card was a couple of different reasons. The extensive drug and alcohol-related criminal history. The extensive drug and alcohol-related criminal history. The applicant is currently on probation or parole for DWI III until August the 5th of 2015. He was convicted of DWI III. In your packets that I gave you, also, once we started looking at the application that he completed for us, he gave false statements on the application. On the back of the application, it asked you if you're on probation or parole. He said no, according to his criminal history and court documents. He is on probation and parole or until August the 5th of this year. Also, under Chapter 10, 1065B, it says that the applicant shall not serve, sell, or handle alcohol. One of his recommendation letters that was sent to us in the very back... Say it's in the back, maybe it's not, let me see. The very last page, one of his recommendation letters was from Damon Mathew. It said that he was a bartender and manager at Chickies, which is a bar at 200, I think it's 205 Texas Street. During this time, he was working without an ABO card then. He's only applied for an ABO card in the city of Shreveport once, and that was this time, and he was denied. So while he was working at Chickies, he didn't have an ABO card. Also...
Where is he working now, or where was he applying to work?
He didn't put it on the application.
Didn't work at Smoothie King?
On the application, they asked where you're going to work, and he left that blank, so we don't know where he was going to go to work. Also, not only has he been convicted, he's 26 years old. He's been convicted three times of DWI. One of those was actually a fourth time that was dropped. He's also been arrested for possession of marijuana, negligent injury, possession of drug paraphernalia, and his flight from an officer.
What was that?
Flight from police, from officers. So to sum it all up, first of all, on the application, he lied. So he could actually be charged with giving false statements. Number two, he has an extensive criminal history with alcohol. And number three, he's on felony probation until August the 5th of this year.
Yeah, Councilman Flory, did you have a request?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. In looking at these letters of recommendation, the person there, Mr. Hampton Smoothie King, says that this gentleman has been working here for two years. And he speaks of his being on time and walking to work, and no matter what the weather was, he worked, he walked, and also that he was, he's very trustworthy. And but, you know, what I get from you is that he's had three DWIs and then the fourth one, a flight from officer. Was he charged with that flight from officer?
He was charged.
Well, I'm just saying that people have to have somebody to help them up the ladder. But I understand you've got a job to do and represent that he may not be of good character. But, Mr. Chairman, that's all I wanted to say, that the records show that he had a recommendation written on him, and he will never get a job up in this, in life, if somebody doesn't take a chance on him. Now, I'd like to hear from him. Is he here today?
He is.
Okay. Stand right there, sir. There you go. I hear you.
State your name and address for the record, too, before you start.
My name is Johnny Kennedy. Right now, I'm living at 9465 Cattle Lake Road on the weekends and 1409 Magnolia Ridge in South Bossier during the weekdays. And I have with me a motion that I filed for early release from probation and signed and ordered by Judge Marcott on May 13th of 2015. So I did not long my application about still being on probation. I've also, I was enrolled in Judge Marcott's Cattle Adult Drug Court, and that right there has a 33% success rate. I graduated it about three months ago, and I've been doing really good. Changed the way I act. I've grown in character. And I've also got with me, at the same time that I applied for my Shreveport ABO card, also applied for my Bossier ABO card, and I have that with me that they approved. And I do understand in the past...
Where are you currently employed, sir?
I was at Smoothie King. I've just recently quit there, and I just applied at Little Italiano in downtown Bossier. And I have a second interview there this afternoon. And I've also got an interview at Posada's in Shreveport if I can get my ABO approved here. And I also have another few applicants, or applications pending at a few places downtown.
And you did complete that drug court, Judge Marcott?
Yes, Cattle Adult Drug Court. And I just got through talking to Judge Marcott in person about, probably two and a half hours ago, and he said he was more than...
How do you explain not reporting, putting that on your application?
I thought I did put that on my application.
But you left it blank. That's all I am, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, can we see that document?
What about that completion? And I think I have Councilman Bradford.
Chairman, I yield to the chief of police.
Counsel, I was just informed by my officer that, security in here, Officer Mesker in the back of the room, he said they just recently, it's Friday, stopped Mr. Kennedy from wandering in and out of traffic, 8, 9 o'clock in the morning by side port, that he was under influence of alcohol and had to get him a ride home in a cab. So I don't know what program he's in, but obviously didn't have the desired effect. And we're still dealing with him drunk at 8:00 in the morning.
And that was when?
This is past Friday.
And what I'll say is that, you know, I am, and I don't mean to cut you off if you have questions, but, you know, I think I'm glad that this guy's completed this drug training and all, but, you know, you're very young to have this much activity and kind of challenges in this world. And I mean, you know, don't get me wrong, a lot of people have partied, a lot of people have done these things, but it's about how you can manage the rest of your life responsibly. And I think we'd be doing you a disservice to keep you working in an alcohol-related industry because I think you, for your success and for your forward movement in life, you may need to get away from that type of work so that you can really get yourself fully healed and working right. That's just my personal kind of take on it. You know, I think you may need a little bit more time working in another industry or working outside of that temptation to make sure that you feel confident about it.
Well, I was going to apply for management positions. I do have associate degrees. And that's the main field that I was going to try going into managing, not necessarily bartending, but in order to be a manager in the service industry. Because you still are going to be dealing with liquor.
There are certainly some restaurants where you may be less exposed to that, you know? But there's some lunch places, things where they don't have a lot of alcohol sales in their, in their business model. Those might be a better suit for you. You know, I've worked in restaurants. I know the culture when you're working late at night and you get off a shift. I mean, there's a temptation, a lot of people have a lot of cash in their hand, temptation to go out to the bars afterwards, you know? I mean, it's, it's hard. And for somebody that may have substance abuse issues, that's a challenge that you don't need to put on yourself. There are other ways you can be successful and, you know, other ways that you can grow your career and also take care of yourself and make sure that you're not putting yourself in a difficult position that could haunt you much further on in life than may be apparent to you right now.
I am still keeping all my doors open. Friday, I went up to the Marines. Trying to get in the Marines, but they're going to be doing a background check on me. And I talked to Judge Marcott about that. Write me a waiver. They're going to be looking into that. And I'm also considering the real estate. Keeping all my, I want to try to keep all my doors open. That's why I applied for my Bossier ABO card, and they granted it.
Got it. Well, Councilman Bradford, did you have any other questions?
Chairman, I was going to withdraw my request to speak, but I was going to make a motion that we sustain the decision by Shreveport Police Department on the application, I mean, the appeal.
And that's a motion by Councilman Bradford that's been seconded by Councilman Foreman.
Can I ask one quick question? As the way I read this, and this is really just a technical question more in it, had he waited till October the 5th of 2015, he would be okay?
He would have, he would have probably still got denied just because of his criminal history. We don't want to put someone in a situation where they're going to be around serving alcohol. We, in the past, like I said, I've approved 2,300 ABO cards since I've been here, and I've only denied 12. Normally, we try to find them, if they, if they don't qualify, we try to find them some other place where they're not actually serving the alcohol. If this was a Walmart incident where he's not serving the alcohol, where he's just stocking the alcohol, it would be a completely different story. But he's not. He's serving the alcohol.
No, no, and I would just, technically, from the way the ordinance is written, if we were August 6th of 2015, he would meet the criteria.
Everything except that where the...
Mr. Chairman, I think, I believe the ordinance requires two years after the probation.
Is it, and so that's what I'm trying to ascertain here because what it says is, on the front page, it says he must not have been convicted of an offense within the last two years of two or more violations. For the two years, it doesn't say, but that's what Mr. Thompson and I were just discussing. And I'm really just curious to know, is it the probationary period, i.e. for his perspective, does he need to wait another two years before he re-appeals? As a function of the way the ordinance reads? Or is it literally an August? But I think it's a year, if you're denied, right? You have to wait a year before you can do it. Let's, let's say that wasn't in play. I'm just saying, I'm trying to give him a clear... What if, in terms of what, you know?
I would have still denied him just because of the history.
The history. Understand. Understand.
Got it.
But it is a point that I'd be curious to know if he would have to wait two years from August 5th in case he's looking at as a potential option for his next step, then he at least has a timeline when he knows when he can apply again. I mean, so that's why I asked the question. But other than that, I don't really have any other comment.
Mr. Chairman, I, there's a long list of qualifications with different time periods on different parts of the... So if you don't mind, I would send that to y'all, and let's not tell him definitely at this point. I can, I can get you all that information.
Perfect. All right, we do have a motion before us. I think we're, Councilman Jenkins is the only one who hasn't voted.
A yes vote is to sustain the decision of the...
Correct, and that motion...
Chairman, what is the motion?
What's that?
For the record.
The motion was to...
Sustain the denial. Police Department.
And, and so we have a motion that's passed unanimously. Okay. And so, you know, we've, I don't want you to leave here thinking that, you know, that these opportunities are denied to you because anybody thinks poorly of you or anything. I mean, you know, your, your letters of recommendations show a lot of potential. There's a lot of, you know, real opportunities that you have to really get your life in the, in the direction that I know you want to see it going, and we want to support and encourage that. And I think that, you know, one of the things that we see is that, you know, this may be an area where it's too tempting for you right now. So, you know, maybe explore some of the other aspects of your career options and maybe come back to this one later if that's where the road sends you. But, you know, you have a lot of ability out there, and so keep up the good work on trying to stay clean and, and just try to stay safe and responsible out there.
Yes, sir. Is there a timeframe of when I can?
Corporal Cisco can, can help you determine that timeframe, and he'll get that for you.
And what Mr. Bradford was, or Mr. Jenkins was talking about earlier, that was one thing that I, it says he must not have been convicted of an offense within the last two years of two or more violations of the provisions of any municipal or parish ordinance or state law relating to alcohol beverages. I haven't been convicted of any offenses since, it's been over two and a half years, and I haven't been charged for any offenses since August 4th of 2012.
Understand. And I think, I think his point, and I'll just make it clear, I mean, his...
Yes, sir.
The corporal's point is, you know, we need to see a longer period of exhibited behavior in line. And we respect, certainly, he sees a lot of cases, but I did want to at least give you, you know, what the criteria is. And I will say, another thing, as far as looking at some of the military options, they, all the services have different criteria. So if for some reason one service may deny you based on a background check, not all of them will. So don't think that just if one service doesn't allow it, that the other ones may not be an option.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Councilmembers.
On the incident that could, could have happened on Friday that Chief just spoke of, I mean, you need to, may, need to consider yourself as being lucky on that because you could have been charged again, and which would have prohibited you from further, well, with your job outlook or whatever. That would have followed you into more trouble. I think that you, you're a young guy, and I think that you have time to try to clear it up, but that could have, I mean, consider, like I said, consider yourself lucky. That could have been more danger to you and to others out in the, in the city.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
All right, at this point, we're done with our appeals. Are there any reports from officers' boards or committees?
Mr. Chairman, let me just mention, and let me express my appreciation to you and to Councilman Bowman for coming to the Land Emergency and Business Task Force public hearing on Thursday. And my appreciation to the mayor and to the administration for their contribution to that hearing and to the council staff. We got a lot of information, inquiries that we think we can review. And once we do that, I think in consultation with the administration, we may look at maybe mending some parts of the original procedure program to modernize it, as you say.
All right, well, we will look for those as they, as that discussion progresses. And it was certainly a lot of good information shared in the, in the meeting the other day. So we appreciate that. Public safety, I know y'all met. Did y'all want to give a report or save it for next time? Fair enough.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to speak a little bit more for only zoning board appeal tomorrow. I'll be bringing that before the council concerning the property out on Burke.
And I apologize, I think I skipped over that on the agenda. That is on our agenda to vote on tomorrow.
I have a question for Mr. Sweeney on that regard, if I may. This is not necessarily as a precursor of how I think it's going to fall on that particular item tomorrow. But is it possible for us to, I'm going to say, reverse ourselves on a decision when we accepted this into the city under the premise that it was going to be a school, this property in question? Subsequently, I believe it's been ruled by the school board that they're happy to take a charter, but not on that particular location. So now, could we go back and say, well, we'd like to... So now, could we go back and say, well, we'd like to de-annex it, so to speak, back to the parish? Because we essentially annexed it under the premise that it was gonna be a charter school in the city.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if you're welcome to answer that.
It may be a legal question and I apologize if I'm-
I want you to understand something. The ZBA's approval was for a school, not for charter school, not for a parochial school, any school.
Understand.
So, other words, that ruling is merely meant to be for a school. It's, if whether or not it's a charter school or not, it really doesn't make any difference.
Okay. No, no. Okay, the reason, I'll tell you, it may not make a difference to the ZBA, but the reason that it, the primary reason that many of us felt that it was reasonable to bring it into the city was that it would be paying, it would be a tax generating property. So there's a certain aspect from our perspective that it does matter that it is a school that would be paying taxes. But I, and I don't mean to say it's a zoning issue, because it really isn't a zoning issue. It's probably more of a legal question on annexation rather than zoning. So I defer to Julie there at this.
I was just gonna say, there, there is a procedure under the same statutes that we annex under. There's a procedure for de-annexation. I don't recall exactly. I don't know if it's the reverse where you get the petitions in the same way that you get it to come in, but we would have to follow that. It could be done, but you have to follow that procedure.
Well, based on, depending on how tomorrow goes, that would be something, I would certainly think that I, for one, as one of the people that voted to annex it, under a certain stipulation that isn't gonna be in play, then I'd like to go back because it was clearly brought to us in a certain manner. So that's why I mentioned. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes, sir.
Could I ask you a question?
Sure.
Now, what, help me understand this now. What we're looking at here is a zoning board, right? And what happened in the zoning board was they moved it from residential to commercial. Is that correct?
No, it was already, when it came in, they had the, all the request was from the ZBA was to approve for a school. All schools have to be approved through the ZBA. That's, that is a requirement.
Okay.
Does not approve by the MPC board by the ZBA. So they didn't change the zoning, they just approved the special exception use for a school on this property.
Okay, now, here we go now. We leave this, don't touch the zoning board action, and they go and move a school somewhere else located school, then somebody can come there, it's already approved for a school. Is that correct?
Yes, but they have to do something within a year. So within a year from the date of approval or from the date of the appeal, that if somebody does not come in and build a school there, that, that allowance disappears within one year.
So it goes back, like, what I'm wanting it back in its original form.
Right.
Because it's not that I'm, my data shows different what comes up by the zoning field, such as traffic and quality of life and these other things. That's the reason I want it back to its original state.
And the easiest thing to do there, and I'm not giving you advice on this, is just, would it be to reverse what the ZBA has done? If you do that, then you don't have to de-annex it because basically you can keep the property because something else will come in there that you might learn, earn some tax revenues off of, and it basically takes it away. So I mean, that is within your, within your purview to reverse the, the decision of the ZBA.
Okay.
And then you don't have to worry about a school coming in there.
Just reverse.
That's right.
Okay.
Or wait a year and it goes away by itself. Whichever way you wanna go.
Okay, okay. I thank you.
You're welcome.
Made very clear, Councilman.
Thank you.
Mr. Sweeney, just one more quick question.
Yes.
Kind of to build on what Councilman Florrie had asked. I know councilmembers have gotten a lot of emails about the upcoming appeal and there's a lot out on social media. You know, everything from site plan approval to the ZBA decision.
Right.
And I mean, just to be perfectly clear, there's, site plan is not a part of this appeal at all.
That is correct, because all you're looking at is simply the designation of our school. The site plan was already previously approved through the necessary channels, taking consideration traffic and impact and all that with LADOTD. All of that was done. So what would be before you tomorrow is simply either accepting it being a school as the ZBA has designated or removing that and rejecting what the ZBA has done.
And, and if, if we override the ZBA, then it goes back to a commercial property as it is now?
The property is not, remember, we didn't change the zoning. We just did the special exception. That special exception goes away. The base zoning of what it is right now will remain in place.
R1D.
That is correct.
Got it. Thank you.
One more question, Sweeney. Is there another option? If we reverse it back to you, is there anything that you can do other than what you've already done?
No, sir, there's not, because basically I, I would not anticipate the ZBA would reverse its position because it was, it was, I think, a pretty significant vote for, and they took all of the factors into consideration and the neighborhood groups were here and people voiced their concerns and they were supportive of it. So I would say that there really isn't anything that, that I or my, or the MPC can do to change that. Would have to just simply go according to what we have now, which is if you rescinded it back to the ZBA, they would probably end up with the same decision and it would be back before you again, so.
That's right.
I wish there were easy solutions. Not always there is an easy solution. Any other questions, gentlemen?
Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, let's see. Now we, at this point, do we have a clerk's report or did we steal your clerk's report thunder by going at the beginning of the meeting to talk about that?
Not today, Mr. Sweeney.
Okay. We heard his feelings. Let's see, additional communications? Are there any additional communications from the mayor's office?
No, sir. I would like to ask though about the confirmation letter that we sent to council for Downtown Development Authority. I don't know if you wanted to have any discussion about that today. We didn't bring that one up a few minutes ago.
Everyone should have received that. Those are the appointments that are made by the Chamber of Commerce.
Either of those individuals here today?
I don't believe so.
I don't think so.
I didn't see either of them.
I didn't ask them to come today. I can't ask them to come.
The council was notified. I mean, they have been notified and-
Yes.
Yeah, one is the appointment of the Chamber of Commerce, one is the appointment of the African American Chamber.
African American, right.
And so those are two members that are replacing, one member whose business has moved out of downtown and so he's leaving the board and the other is a member who's term was just expired, so.
Yes. Okay.
So are there any additional communications from council members?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, a couple of questions, actually. Have there been any new conversation regarding Cent standpoint?
There has not been. We had planned to actually have some discussion with council after this month. I, I kinda wanted us to get past all that so that we could, you know, get into a posture of, let's have some dialogue. And they have contacted my office and we have had conversation with them. And they are, you know, actually wanting to, let's look at extending the number of years on their contract. And so, you know, I see it basically, it's up to council. I don't have any objections to that, but, you know, I think that at some point in the next month, we need to have those discussions.
Well, I mean, council has spoken, and I guess in regards to the, the, once they didn't, they hadn't signed the contract and it fell back to some more language that, that they are forced to do. And they are doing that.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Well, we, I mean, they've signed the contract.
Oh, they did?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
The four and a half percent?
Yes, sir.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We took care of the business once you, once you passed.
Okay, I thought they were, I thought they was firming it.
Oh, 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 sir. We, we, we're in the mode of collecting.
Oh, okay. Thank you. My next question is, basically, I, I mentioned at the previous meeting regarding some of the, some of the requests for service that I have submitted, and I want to bring some closure to those and I, I, I'm gonna be recommitting those, Mr. Thompson. You, I think, you know, some of, some of, some of those that I referred to, you know?
Yeah, we, we can put all of those, I mean, we have them in a script.
Yeah, and I just wanna see, because some of them have been closed. One, one particular, Mr. Crawford, I would like you to address is the, is the speeding, speeding sign, I mean, the, yeah, the speed sign, speed limit sign on North Allen between the Swepco plant and, and, and Fourth Street. It's residential and there's no, there's no sign.
There's no sign.
And the residents are telling me that when those guys get off, they speed down, down to Fourth Street.
Yes, sir. Be glad to take a look at it.
Thank you. But there's others, but that's one I would like, you know, to, for you to explain if you can.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great, thank you. And if there are no additional communications, we do have one request from a citizen who is here today. As I understand it, there's a property standards case that will come to us at our next work session, but wanted to speak to us today. So if everybody's okay with it, I'm going to call Ms. Odessa National.
Ms. Dorothy here? She's here. Dorothy's here.
She's here.
She's here, not seen.
Ariadne's here.
Yeah.
Sorry for the miss. I'm the property owner at 719 Argyle. When I was here last in February, I addressed the board and let them know that I had a contractor out there that ran off with my money and I was having to take legal action. But while I was here, there was a young man, Robert Joseph, that was here before you earlier with his property at 618 Argyle. And he approached me at my property and told me he was a contractor and that he could get some work done to my house. Well, I paid him and he's been furious to work. I recently found out that the, most of the damage that has been done to my house was because of Mr. Joseph. When I bought this property, there was a squatter staying in my house. It was the winter time and he had one of those propane heaters and I wasn't going inside the house at that time physically, so I told him I would give him time to get out of the property, not knowing that the guy that Mr. Robert had working for him was the guy that was staying in my house. Get what I'm saying? So he was renting my house out when I purchased it. I recently found out that he was also taking, he went to prison, went to jail because he had been breaking into the houses around in the neighborhood and taking the cabinets and the toilets and the tubs out. Unfortunately, my house had none of those, so I guess I was one of those people. But I was here to ask the board for, I'm supposed to be here on the 12th, and I'm asking the board for more time to get this property done because now I'm having to do it myself.
If I could ask, if Dorothy and maybe Chief Shaw or somebody else can maybe talk with you and make sure and get the information so that we understand these, these allegations of what's going on here, we need to, we need to make note of those.
Yes, sir.
Those are, those are pretty serious things, so we need to get some more, more information about that. And then certainly we'll take that into consideration when we hear your case and, which is actually in about three weeks. So, so you got a little time anyway if we need to get some additional information. But right now, I would love to see if I could ask you to talk to Ms. Farnell and someone in the police department and make sure and share all the information that you have so we can, we can look into that a little bit more.
I thank you.
That's a crime report, huh? Go ahead, Jim, sir.
You had the White House with, that had the graffiti that you took.
Yeah.
She took care of a lot of, okay, okay.
Yeah. And, I mean, I've, I've done, in the four months that I've had this guy working on my house, in the two days that I've been there this weekend, I didn't do any more work myself. I, I mean, I've got to get it done.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just gonna mention that, again, you're fortunate that, that we, we have an extra week before we meet again regarding-
Yeah, and I knew he was coming to the board today. That's why I wanted to come and approach you. I didn't ask for more time.
Well, what I'm saying is that the, the inspection of your property would not be done until the day of, which would be the 12th, I think it is.
Yes, sir.
So whatever progress, whatever work you have done that day, I think, I think they will take that in great consideration. And I don't think we would have a strong problem if you can continue to work on it up until the 12th, then I think, I think you'll be okay. And then we decide on the 12th whether or not, you know, they would be reviewed it, they would bring us, you know, the results of their review and then we will consider working with you on how we can continue the progress.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you so much. We appreciate you sharing that with us. All right, if that's all, this meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, what I'm getting at, she's saying that that guy that was renting out of her